All right. Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, February 15, 2022 Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. And welcome to some of our junior high family who's joining us tonight. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Feig, can you take roll call, please?
Dr. Ann Herring.
Here.
John Fiddler. Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Michael Trupina. Jason Mel.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Eric Flam, Director of Teaching and Learning; Mrs. Dawn Harris, Director of People's Services; Dr. Kristi Haller, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator, as well as our Board Secretary. Right. Amended agenda. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors amend the published agenda for tonight's meeting as follows. Add a field trip beyond the 60-mile radius that will take place prior to the next board voting meeting and has already been vetted by the building administration. The reason for the addition is the Board Secretary received this request less than 24 hours prior to meeting, and costs are limited to transportation via district vehicle.
I'll need a motion.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. The Board held an executive session on the following dates to discuss personnel matters: February 2nd, February 3rd, February 6th, February 7th, and February 8th, 2022. This evening, the Board will be voting to accept Dr. Minor's voluntary resignation. We appreciate the contributions of Dr. Minor in promoting our mission and our vision for the Exeter Township School District. The Board and Dr. Minor have mutually agreed that her service to the district will cease as of May 3rd, 2022. The Board, in collaboration with the administrative team sitting with us this evening, have placed Dr. Cynthia Mirziski on tonight's voting agenda as interim superintendent. Dr. Mirziski, I'm pronouncing it wrong and I apologize to her, is a retired superintendent from the Skoko Valley School District and has served as an educational leader in Berks County for 40 years. We're thankful for her support as we work through the process of hiring a permanent replacement for the position of superintendent. We'll now be moving to public comment relating tonight's agenda, in which we'll be following Board Policy Number 903 regarding public participation in board meetings. First commentator, Mary Beth Gardella.
My name is Mary Beth Gardella, and my comments tonight are on the agenda and the budget. I just want to be clear on what I'm reading and what you are voting on tonight. First, the taxpayers paid for the superintendent to attend the superintendent's conference in Tennessee this week. Her attendance at this conference will be of no benefit to our school district. In fact, at this conference, in fact, we've really just paid her to pass around her resume to all the recruiters who will also be at that conference. There's no discussion on the agenda that she should be reimbursing the taxpayers for her attendance. Yet, at the last meeting, it was decided to spend money having the Solicitor investigate whether we should shortchange the volunteer firefighters who live in our community and give back far more. Second, the taxpayers are now burdened with paying the superintendent to stay home until May 3rd. Why approve this paid leave? Does her contract include any provisions for paying out her accumulated sick leave and vacation time? If so, then just pay out that amount. If not, then the superintendent can resign effective February 7th. If we must pay her until February, until May 3rd, then why can't we assign her tasks to complete during this time? We have a strategic plan that is due in August that we have not heard any updates on. Where is the strategic plan? Has anyone asked for any updates? Is it being worked on? And when will the public have the opportunity to review? Shouldn't we have a superintendent work all the way up to her last day to finish the plan? And what happens now to our goals? Are we off the hundred, hundred, hundred? Is the rent-a-super going to finish our strategic plan? This should be the focus of the Board, the education of the students. Third, I noticed on the agenda that you intend to approve a consent agenda on a contract for an outside contractor to deliver Orton-Gillingham instruction to a single student at the rate of $100 an hour, plus mileage and expenses. And my question is why? We spent an ungodly amount of money on Fontis and Penel, and we were told this is the top-of-the-line reading instruction. We paid for teachers to be specially trained at the IU on Wilson Foundations. We even have reading specialists with very low case, very low caseloads to support struggling readers. With all these resources and training, why are we bringing in a contract contractor to deliver one-on-one Orton and Gillingham instruction? Do we not have the talent internally to do this? And will this become the default strategy for students with whom the multi-tiered system of support has failed? The previous Board helped usher out one superintendent and hired someone who did not even make it two years. On your watch, Exeter has lost another superintendent, one who brought in unrealistic goals and expensive programs. In my previous public comments, I mentioned that you have already lost the trust of many in this community. And while the emperors fiddled with mask mandates and feel-good boutique initiatives, Exeter has suffered. It does not seem that this Board or administration has any intent to rein in the uncontrolled spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gardella. Next is Ted Gardella.
Ted Gardella, 218 Pennsylvania Avenue. In the minutes approved through January 11th Committee of the Whole Meeting, there's quite a lengthy section detailing the desire of this administration to evidently ignore the state requirements of competitive bids in order to facilitate a software purchase for the total cost of $48,000. The Board even wanted to memorialize this purchase in Policy 610. It's hard to understand why you would not want competitive bids for a purchase of this set. The minutes also contained a discussion about letting the administration pay bills without Board approval, creating a mechanism for retroactive. The discussion documented made it hard to understand why the Finance Department would need this if they were planning appropriately for an $80 million budget. Regardless, you approved both items in January, so now there's the potential for the administration to pay for an item that exceeds the cost required for a competitive bid and then have it retroactively approved. But as minutes go, the recording of this discussion was mostly accurate, completely different from the summarization of public comments. Many times, when one is making a public comment that is not aligned with the administration policy and point of view, the Board Secretary does not provide an accurate summary. As a case in point, in the minutes for the December 7th voting meeting, my public comments were completely mischaracterized. I did not complain about how the district uses funds. I was documenting the many complaints that we residents hear from board members about the funding of charter schools and private schools. Perhaps in the future, to assist the Board Secretary in his understanding, we should all provide the written statements for summarization in the interest of accuracy and fairness to all viewpoints. However, I am very pleased to see that the information that I shared about the current AP policy will be addressed tonight in the changes proposed to the Soaring Eagle. It was an incredibly nuanced point that prior to this change, students in grades 9 through 11 who take an AP course in exam and do not score a 3 or higher were punished with a negative impact on their quality points or course rate. It's even more egregious to note that seniors are not currently published in the same way, simply because their exam scores are not available before the final GPA computation. In addition to making this necessary change for the Soaring Eagle Handbook next year, the Board should consider making this change effective immediately, so it will ensure that all AP students are treated equitably regardless of exams. Now, if the Board could just direct the administration to provide data at a future board meeting on the required courses that historically have featured the highest failure rates at the high school, the community and the Board could truly begin to evaluate the high school strategies proposed in the draft comprehensive plan to determine if they will have an impact on improving graduation rate. Hopefully, we will not see changes to required credits in order to facilitate a higher graduation rate. Finally, a bit on communication. I know that many parents are pleased with the parent square system. However, it seems that almost all district communication that is active is only addressed to parents, not to all community members, people who all pay school taxes to support the district. Passive methods of communication such as posting on the district website would not seem to treat all residents equitably, and we all know that equity should be at the heart of all that is done in the district. I'm sure that all residents will be interested in the development of the budget for the upcoming school year, to know if they will again experience an increase in property taxes to continue to support unconstrained growth in the district budget. Your current enrollment and budget represents over $20,000 per student per year, an amazing figure when you consider that it is for all students, including those in kindergarten. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Gardella.
Oh.
Could you give your statement to the Board President, please?
Yes. I would be happy to read it. Thank you. I just wanted you to clarify your saying, because you spoke quick and I know it's because you're.
Right. Four minutes. I've got a lot of stuff.
So you were saying that your comments were not put in properly in the minutes?
Correct.
Okay.
In the one that I referenced.
Okay.
It was one line, which it typically is when you're not in agreement. Typically, you get about a line.
Okay.
When you are in agreement, you get three, four, or five lines.
Okay.
But yeah, it was mischaracterized as Mr. Gardella complained about district uses of funds. I wasn't. I was simply talking about the complaints that we hear about funding of charter schools and services. But thank you for clarifying.
Well, no, I want to make sure that you let us know if it's not put in properly. And also, you said about communication regarding the entire community. How do you see that happening? Do you see that through the parent square being accessible to everybody, or?
I think that would be a brilliant move if you would allow folks to opt into that. It would be the lowest cost rather than having printed district newsletters or having meetings. If everyone could opt into parent square at no cost, provide their emails, their phone numbers, of course, you would have to, you know, certainly, you'd have to change the philosophy of messaging. There would have to be messaging specifically for non-parents as well as for those for parents. But yeah, that would be a brilliant solution.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment. Kevin Boe? Boe? I apologize.
Good evening. Kevin Boe, 4421 Phil Dale Road. Just a few comments on some issues that St. Karen and I have discussed. Number one, why are we investigating the fire tax credit? The tax credit makes sense morally and economically. Would the taxpayers rather have their taxes raised to a full-time fire department that will cost the taxpayers far more than the tax credit awarded to those brave enough to save our homes and our families? Number two, the communication between school officials and the parents is way below acceptable. My wife and I have reached out to administration about teachers bullying students to wear masks correctly, going as far as using bullhorns to scream at the kids in the hallways. There were teachers telling students that if they don't wear their masks correctly, they could kill their families, not the students' families, the teachers' families. We never heard back from anyone, not even a reply to saying they got our email. The communication between school officials and parents is unacceptable and needs to change. Maybe the Board could do something policy-wise. I know other schools have policies that states that teachers or school officials must reply in 36 hours, which is something that could fix the problem, because when parents are reaching out to school officials and they don't even hear back, that shows that they don't care. They don't care about the parents and they don't care about the kids. Lastly, I'm sure you guys are going to love this one. Kids wearing masks on school buses. The federal government through the TSA has mandated masks on public transportation. School buses are not public transportation. If it was, any of us could get on the bus and take us anywhere in the community. We can't because it's against the law. So why is Exeter yet again following an unconstitutional mandate? The federal government nor the TSA has any regulatory power over school busing. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Hunter Ehrens.
Good evening. I just want to quickly offer my thanks to Dr. Minor and Mary Hours and great energy she invested in the district. Though we did not always agree, she was dedicated to the education of the community's children and the improvement of that education. With her departure, I encourage the Board to build upon the success she.
Mr. Ehrens, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Hunter Ehrens, 5450 Ulieter.
And that's it for comments? Board minutes. There's no objection. We will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's school board meetings, January 2nd, 2022, special board voting meeting, January 11th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and January 18th, 2022 Board Voting Meeting. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. There's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the January 2022 Treasurer's Report and payment request dated January 19th, 2022 through February 15th, 2022. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the Treasurer's Report is approved. All right. Education Committee, Mr. Fiddler.
Thank you, Dr. Hearing. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following education committee items. There are four items for approval. I would like to pull out the third item under the conferences, so we'll vote just all of the items except that conference.
Are you on Section C?
Yes. So the item we pull out is Conference Number 3 under Item 4.
Second. So this is 1, 2, and 3 altogether?
Minus the third conference.
Minus the third conference, which is, this is the focus?
Yeah, that's where the U.S.A. Take Care Bureau.
Okay. Okay. So we're voting on Item 1, 2, and 4 under Section C. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes. Sorry. Because it was brought up in comments, perhaps we can comment on the necess, you know, can we comment on the Orton-Gillingham tutoring services? Let it, you know, can we just, is that okay? Can we comment on why that is necessary if we searched throughout our buildings and if we needed this?
Sure. That's an easy one. So we've talked on occasion at the Board about specialized instruction and specialized methodology for special education students. So I'll keep it simple. The provision of an Orton-Gillingham tutor has nothing to do with the infusion of Fontis and Penel Classroom or any literacy initiatives brought in by Dr. Minor. It has everything to do with highly specialized needs of special education students. So regardless of any training or anything like that that we're doing in the district, including training for Wilson Reading System, we're always going to have some students who need that next level of instruction. To train most teachers in Orton-Gillingham en masse is a costly endeavor for the district, so it actually works out for us to be able to do tutoring as needed with that approach.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. You're very welcome. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
So now to Item 3, Sub-Item 3, Section 4. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the conference called Safety Care Behavioral Training, purpose for which is to prepare staff to safely prevent and manage dangerous behavior provided by the Berks County Unit, has no cost to the district.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Just for clarification, I asked Mr. Fiddler to pull this out of the agenda, because obviously, my spouse is named going here for this training. I did confer with the Solicitor on the matter, and based on that counsel, I do not need to abstain from this vote, because neither myself nor my wife receive any sort of financial benefit based on my approval of this training.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And that concludes the education.
All right. Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Dr. Hearing. If you could all follow along on your agenda, we're going to be pulling several items out of the consent agenda. We'll be pulling out 1A under Administrative Staff, all of 2, 3A under Administrative Staff, 3B under Administrative Staff, and 5A under Leaves of Absence. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number 1A under Support Staff, number 3 under Certificated Staff, A and B under Support Staff, A, B, C, and D under Extracurricular Staff, A, B, and C, number 4 under Administrative Staff, A, Support Staff, A, B, C, under Food Service Staff, A, and under Leaves of Absence for number 5, that would be 5B, and then number 6.
A motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, next. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. We're going to go to number 2, under Certified Staff, A and B, and under Support Staff, A, B, and C.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Dr. Hearing. I know we have several people here today, but Board wanted to publicly recognize Mrs. Graff. She's a 3rd grade teacher at Watten Creek Elementary. She's retiring at the end of the year. She has 32 years of service with our district. Mrs. Erin Staub, she's a gifted teacher at the junior high school, retiring at the end of the year with 11 years of service. Mrs. Cynthia Fox, Human Resources Confidential Secretary, retiring on May 2nd with 28 years of service to the district. Tori Knott, Learning Support Paraprofessional at the senior high, retiring effective January 25th with 20 and 1/2 years of service. And Jerry Wary, our bus driver, retiring effective June 3rd with 20 years of service. And I don't know if you want to rise, but I just wanted to say thank you all very much for your time and dedication to the district.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Yes, thank you for your service.
Okay, next, we are going to move to Section 3A under Administrative Staff. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Under Number 3, Administrative Staff, A, Alicia Leonard. There is a title change for this. It was incorrect in the agenda. The correct title change should be K to 12 Student Support Coordinator. The rest of it is correct.
Second. Here we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Is this a, this is an administrative position? It falls under Act 93. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It was the position previous held by Melissa Devlin, which was the supervisor position. We revised the job description and have presented it to the Board, and we just recently filled the position with Alicia Lenhart, who's on the agenda this evening.
Alicia Lenhart was formerly employed by Karen Foundation?
That's correct. She's employed by Karen. She probably still is, still is, and she's been working out of our high school, but has been supporting our other buildings over the years.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next, we are going to move to 1A under Administrative Staff. 1A. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Under Number 1, Resignations, under Administrative Staff, subsection A, Dr. Kimberly I Minor, Superintendent, resignation effective May 3rd, 2022.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next we are going to move to section 5A, under Leaves of Absence. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Under 5, Leaves of Absence, A, Dr. Kimberly I Minor, Paid Administrative Leave effective February 7th, 2022, through and including May 3rd, 2022.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion and a second, discussion?
Yes, Dr. Minor, I'm sorry, Dr. Herring, apologies. In an effort to keep the public informed, we wanted to clarify why we are requesting administrative leave for Dr. Minor during her resignation period. Dr. Minor's resignation came at a surprise to us and does not take her through the end of the year. Knowing that we have several things going on within district, including but not limited to our budget and our negotiations with ETEA and Food Services, as well as the Act 93 contract due by the end of the year, we felt as though it was in the best interest of the district to have a substitute superintendent that could assist in this process as opposed to a lame duck superintendent with a pending resignation prior to the end of the school year.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And finally, tonight, we are going to go to 3, under Administrative Staff, B. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Under number 3, Administrative Staff, Section B, Dr. Cynthia Merzeweski, Substitute Acting Superintendent, effective February 22nd, 2022, through and including June 30th, 2022, in accordance with the agreement with the district and Dr. Merzeweski.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, Dr. Herring, again, in an effort to keep the public informed, Dr. Merzeweski and the Exeter School District pending today's vote have agreed to the following terms. One, a daily per diem rate of eight hundred dollars per day, three days per week. Two, a time commitment of three days per week in district. Number three, Dr. Merzeweski will be available for board meetings and will assist the district as we work through a budget and through the contract negotiation process. She has also agreed to be available offsite as necessary during her off days.
Okay. All in favor.
Just a question regarding availability of offsite. Is that, is there an additional cost with that, or is that factored into the eight hundred dollars?
To my, to my knowledge, her contract will be eight hundred dollars a day for the three days per week.
So any, any other involvement outside of that is comped, or not comped, but unbilled, so to speak?
That is my understanding.
Do you have some clarity on that?
I don't know if there's anyone here that can clarify that. All right.
We can double check, but my understanding was basically by the phone and not coming in.
But we will dig deeper into that.
It did include, however, board meetings and meetings for, for our different budget negotiation processes that we were going through.
Right, she did, she did say that she would be here at no, like, at no additional cost to sit in on our board meetings and such.
Well, I see that she's online, so could she confirm that?
Can you hear me? Oh, hi. Yeah, so, sure, availability by, by phone, I said, of course, I would not, first of all, hello, everybody, that I would not, you know, not return a phone call on a, on a Monday if it wasn't one of my days. So I'm certainly available by phone on those off days and there is no, that's just kind of rolled into the, to the whole total, total daily rate there. So if, there would not be an additional cost for that. In regard to board meetings, one of my days will definitely be Tuesdays, so there's no hours to the day. We haven't said it's just an eight-hour day because many of the administrators and teachers and all educators know that we have many, many hours in our day. So Tuesdays will definitely be one of the days and the board meetings will definitely be there. Did that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The Board of School Directors is pleased to welcome Dr. Merzeweski to the Exeter Township School District and is confident that her exemplary and proven leadership will allow the district to have a secure and seamless transition as we search for a new superintendent. We look forward to introducing her to our teachers, staff, students, and community in the coming days and hope you'll give her a warm welcome as she settles into Exeter. Okay, moving on to Finance, Facilities, and Audit Committee, Mr. Mel. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
For item 3, to recommend and approve the solicitor to further investigate the firefighter tax credit and options for implementation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I, no.
Okay, I apologize because I did miss part of the last meeting and it wasn't online. I couldn't imagine what I had remembered. But what was the cost total for what his presentation was? Can anybody remember that?
Forty-six thousand three hundred dollars.
That's what I thought it was, thank you.
At a cap of twenty-five hundred dollars per resident.
So just, I just want to clarify, we, we, with this approval, we are not approving any.
Right, I understand, yes.
The only thing we're approving is paying the solicitor.
Sure, sure.
To it.
Sure.
But the recommendation that you put, Mr. Jordan, was paying the taxpayer fifty percent.
That's, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mel. I want to remind the, I'm not sure if you all remember this, but this has been looked at over the past couple of years. And before we would have the solicitor look into this, it's something that we should note that, I'm assuming that the solicitor is only going to be looking into the uniformity clause because that is the only thing, from my research and from what the emails that we've gotten from any solicitor in the past or from Pennsylvania State Board Association, they are only concerned about the uniformity clause. So is that the only thing that she will be looking into? And does she know how much that's going, how many hours that may run?
We're not talking a lot of hours. The uniformity clause issue is a, is an issue that we need to check out. But also, it was going to be my intention, if this is approved, to look at any sort of variations of what you could possibly consider in terms of a rebate or, or however it could be handled. I haven't done the work yet, so I don't know, but typically there are multiple ways to handle something like that. I wanted to take a look at it and be able to present back to the board, like, here's a couple of options, if you were interested in doing that, how you could, how you'd structure something like that.
Okay, thank you very much. And I do want to, it is, there is no other school district in this area or anywhere else in Pennsylvania that has this, except the two that you sent us, two that are out in Altoona and.
Correct, there are, there are two school districts, each of them are giving a two hundred dollar tax, tax pay.
That's what I did see, okay. So this is quite a bit more than something that is done, that has been done so far.
To my knowledge.
And can you tell me, I did also read as part of the, the law that allows this, Article 8, subsection 2B2, that. Right, part of Act 91, that we would have to work in conjunction with the township as they already have something in place. And so.
My understanding is they, they are separate entities that can each do this, so the township is already offering a fifty percent tax pay.
Right, and I understand that, but I do realize that this is something that we would have to work with the township, if they're offering fifty percent and what basis we would have to go off of this on, based on Act 93. That's something, I, I realize that might not be something that you, that you know, and, but I am assuming we are going to have to work closely with the township on this, which we have not seemed to be able to do in the past.
Again, my, my understanding is that it's, it's a separate, we are a separate tax entity, so I am not aware of anything that we would have to cooperate with the township or.
The base of, the base of their, like, their tax base. Or like, if we were giving them a rebate based on such and such and the township is giving a rebate of fifty percent based on their tax base, we would have to decide who is, who comes first, or, the point is, we would have to work with, I mean, there's, we'd have to work in some capacity with the township, would we not?
I, Mr. Mel, I don't think there's, and I don't think there's any reason to have to interact with the township. It's a separate, as Mr. Mel said, it's a separate entity, it's a separate tax, and this is, this applies strictly to the civil tax, property tax.
Property values, yeah.
It doesn't have anything to, any, any kind of corresponding tax.
And I, I'm sure, Mrs. Montaigne, if we would approve to investigate this, that would probably get flushed out if there is something like that, but.
Yes.
So I just, I did reach out to the school board presidents at both Kimber Heights and Clayesburg-Kimmel. Did exchange emails with a board member at Kimber Heights, who actually is also the Assistant Fire Chief, just, I wanted to sort of understand how they arrived at their two hundred dollar figure. This fellow's name is Jerry Grant, he's the sitting school board member, he's also Assistant Fire Chief of one of the four fire departments covered, covered by this, that served that municipality. He said that the several municipalities in our county enacted a firefighter tax credit when the law went into effect in 2016, 17. We spoke to a number of those municipal officials to get their feedback, all of them had the credit of two hundred dollars, so we went with that figure. Our area is rather rural, most of the fire departments in our area run eight hundred to three hundred of alarms per year. We felt based on those numbers that two hundred dollars is a good number to use, I hope this helps. So I haven't heard back from Clayesburg-Kimmel at this point, but we'll see.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd just like to comment too on this. I just want to, I'll, you know, make sure everyone is aware, again, this is just to approve the solicitor to investigate the matter further. This is not approving the dollar amount that was shown at the presentation that Mr. Jordan gave at the committee of the whole meeting. I, I definitely think it is good to know what options are out there and available. I think, you know, not, no one is going to say we don't want to help our fire department, but I think we, you know, there is obviously due diligence here that needs to happen from this solicitor, and I think there's, you know, thoughts that we need to put behind in, in terms of how much money, if this does go through, how much money we are actually going to approve, if that happens. You know, one issue I have is the township is only giving fifty percent. The fire department is the responsibility of the municipality. They should be giving a hundred percent. If this is truly an issue that we need to incentivize people to volunteer for the fire department. The other issue I have is that what, we always have to think of what things are going to have to cut in, in order to make up the money. Not just with this, but with anything we approve for costs. So again, I, I do think we need to move forward, in my personal opinion, but in, in terms of the amount that we are going to be able to do, I think that's going to be subject to what we see in the upcoming budget, probably. Thank you.
Do we have an estimation on how much it's going to cost, have the solicitor look into this?
Yeah, Mrs. Montaigne, you said it was not a lot of time?
No, a couple of hours. I don't know where coming up with the options and shaping them will take us, but, you know, eight hours tops, probably a lot less than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if this comment is appropriate for now, but I'm going to say it anyway. If, if we go ahead and the board approves this investigation, can we be prepared at the next community of a whole meeting to present what it is that the board will approve at the following voting meeting? I, I, I don't want to keep talking about this and kicking the can and.
Sure.
I want us to come to a resolution at some point. I had intended to, to ask for a resolution tonight, but I want to respect the fact that those board members would like to have it reviewed further.
Sure.
But I would hope that we make a decision next month, so if we can make sure that if this does go through, that at the COW we have our options in front of us, so we can have our comments and questions and then move forward.
Yeah, I, in terms of budget, preliminary budget presentation, I think that is slated for, I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Pike, do. Okay.
I'm pushing departments to get their budgets back. There's a lot of moving parts, but I hope we have at least some.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I would say the only thing I could see possibly delaying this is not knowing the figures that we're going to be taking with ahead of time and not knowing what that amount should be.
Is that something that can be discussed in your committee with Mr. Pike during the weeks prior to?
Sure, we could, yeah, Mr. Hemper and I could discuss that with, with Mr. Pike. Yep.
I'd like the board to at least consider the minimum of what we give to people who volunteer within the school district, so.
Which is the five hundred ninety-nine dollar rate?
A minimum of five hundred ninety-nine dollars as a starting.
And then is this going to expand to, say, EMS next and, like, are we going to, is this just the fire department right now, or are we going to then be moving on to all of the, those types of emergency personnel? I'm just asking, if we're opening ourselves up.
EMS isn't a volunteer.
Yeah, it is strictly helping volunteers. So we have an all-volunteer fire, firefighter department, and that's where, you know, the tax.
It's not all volunteers.
It's not, there, there were some of them, from Mr. Jordan said, but the, the obvious issue here is with recruitment, if they have to, if they, if they're continuing to have a hard time finding volunteers.
Right, I understand.
This is, this is an incentive.
But they only, and they only get it if they live here, I, I understand that.
And we do have members from the fire department here too, who also need to push.
Okay, no further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Please, Mr. Mel.
Dr. Andrew Battler?
No.
John Fiddler?
Aye.
Dr. Ann Herring?
No.
Dr. David Hemper?
Yes.
Michael Dupina? Jason Mill?
Yes.
Timothy Morgan?
No.
Julia Schaper?
No.
Allison Wilson?
abstaining.
Abstaining. 4-4, motion does not pass, correct, Chair.
So, motion does not carry?
Correct, there's no majority.
Okay. Mr. Mel?
Sorry. My screen fell asleep on me, so I'm just trying to get back in here. And then moving on to item eight, the reason I pulled this out was because this was not discussed during our committee of the whole meeting, and I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on what exactly this is. I did have a discussion with Joe Way regarding that. So just to formally introduce the motion, it was recommended that we approve the E-Rate PPM mini-bids for the 2022 E-Rate funding year, starting seven-one, 2022, to the following vendors, and that was for Wally Computers Oceans.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
So, my discussion with Mr. Way, who is here for questions, obviously, as well, the, those that are not familiar with the PPM, it is a Pennsylvania-based cooperative that brings bid protection to millions of tech products, so we actually go out and bid on these items. The item in question is a new firewall. Mr. Way has indicated that the current firewall is reaching the end-of-life of support, and so the district is, then, through the E-Rate, federal E-Rate program, the district is paying half of the amount that is listed here, half of the forty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and not too cents. The other half is paid for through the E-Rate program, which is subsidies for, through the federal government for internet access and telecommunications services to schools and libraries. So if you do look at the attached document, there were three bids, this is the lowest of the three. Is there any other questions that we do have on this item?
No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, can I ask a question? Since the, and I guess Sharon, I'm probably not going to be able to do this, but I'm going to ask the question anyway. Since the solicitor investigation of the firefighter tax credit was not approved, I'm going to assume that that means that there is support for the tax credit, and I would, I don't know if we can put a motion on the table at this moment that we would consider nothing less than the minimum of six-hundred, five-hundred ninety-nine dollars in our next meeting.
Well, you can certainly ask for that, it's not really a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, if you make it a motion, I think that opens up a much different conversation.
So I can ask for the rest of the board, and again, I'm sort of reaching a conclusion I could be completely wrong on, but I would like us at our next meeting to consider no less than the six-hundred, five-hundred ninety-nine-dollar reimbursement of the higher tax credit.
I would thank Mr. Chupina, we, you know, if we have a committee of the whole, in a couple of weeks, we could have a discussion. I think the Finance Committee could probably put together a proposal based upon, you know, that sort of general recommendation and have something prepared for the next voting meeting. But allow for more conversation, more time in committee of the whole, and, you know, allow the, I think, the Finance Committee to be able to kind of think through the, you know, the recommendation and make sure that we're comfortable making that recommendation through.
Can, Mr. Chupina, when you say minimum, that we have five-hundred ninety-nine, it's actually a maximum, because anything over that six-hundred above has to be ten, has to be reported for taxes.
Yeah, no, I think what I'm saying is that, I hear what you're saying.
It's a minimum and maximum, I believe, is what you're saying.
Right. Was that...
That's the minimum and maximum you're suggesting, is that dollar amount?
No, 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 I'm suggesting that whatever we do, it not be less than five-hundred ninety-nine dollars, whether that is under that, whatever, whatever we end up coming up with, if we're going to have a discussion in the committee of the whole, I'd like us, I'd like, I mean, last week, I think, or last time I had doing nothing to doing full one-hundred percent, could it be possible that we could assess all of the, you know, those options as part of that, as part of that discussion? But again, what I'm saying is, my floor as a starting point would be six-hundred. That's what I'm recommending.
Can you clarify, Brian, this want to begin until when, anyway?
You already have, if it's a tax refund or abatement, you've already done the tax resolution for this year, so it has to be for next year's taxes, which is July first, 2022. Your budget is passed on the tax resolution for this year. You already passed the date that you can amend the budget, which is, I think, three months afterwards, and it's up to six months if you pay that thing.
Thank you. Great, is that, that's everything, Mr. Mel?
That is everything from the Finance Committee, yes.
Thank you very much. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger?
Thanks, Dr. Herring. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve Policy 805, as listed on the agenda, this is revision to an existing policy, and this is first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Mrs. Wilson, can you cover athletics and extracurricular activities as well as ECF?
Sure. I would like to start by saying that fifteen students from our TSA Technology Student Association qualified with their tech-based projects for the state competition that will be coming up this spring. Also, we're looking forward to seeing the high school production of Beauty and the Beast, March tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, that is at seven PM on the tenth and eleventh, and two PM and seven PM on the twelfth. We had twenty-two student athletes participate in Signing Day on February second. These students are preparing to continue their academic and athletic career at the collegiate level. We also have had multiple students participate in our county and district music activities. Moving on to our sports, the boys' and girls' basketball regular seasons have ended. The boys' last night had an upset win in the beginning of the county playoffs, and they will play again tomorrow night in a semifinal game against Berks Catholic at six PM at the San Tander Arena. If they win that, they will play Friday evening for the county championship. They've also qualified for district play, which will start Monday, the twenty-first of February, at seven PM at Hershey. Our wrestling team has a sectional tournament this weekend. Our cheerleaders have just arrived home from Florida, where they achieved first, fourth place, a fourth-place finish in Nationals. Our diving team has had their last weekend at the Central Penn League Championship, and our swimming team will be swimming at the CPL Championship this weekend. Our boys' and girls' bowling teams have qualified for the BCI AA tournament next week, and right now they're participating in individual tournaments for the county. Our indoor track continues, and our spring sports will be starting soon, March seventh for the high school and March twenty-first for the junior high. Also, ECF, I do not have a report from them, but they will be joining us next month to report to us in person.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. VCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Fiddler?
Thank you, Dr. Herring. You all got the JOC briefs, but I have something in addition which wasn't included, and it is a new program at VCTC called the Diversified Occupations, which is designed to work with high school intern programs and not in competition with them. Very briefly, the DO program is designed to provide training in the career and technical area not presently being offered at VCTC or the sending high school, and also to provide training for students who need an alternative form of education to meet their unique needs. And rather than read this whole brochure into the record, Dr. Herring, I'm going to just present this, that's a big statement that no credit will be given to the committee. So I'm not, Brian, do you not like to be done? All right, I'll see you after. And that's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Dr. Hamburger, can you cover BCIU Board Directors and Legislative Liaison?
Sure thing, Dr. Herring. BCIU Board met on January twentieth, next meeting is on February seventeenth, this Thursday. At this last meeting, as part of the celebration of School Director Recognition Month, the Berks IU has an annual student artwork showcase, and this year's theme was architectural design in schools and community. And there's, so there's a piece, there's a piece of work that's submitted by students from every, every school district in Berks County, and then that, that artwork is on display at BCIU in the boardroom through the end of 2022. And so our contribution was from Exeter Township School District High School student Bryn Patchell, and she did a beautiful job of rendering of the, kind of an abstract rendering of the senior high school as part of the architectural design theme. Also, at that meeting, the board seated six new members, and they also unanimously approved the BCIU general fund budget. As part of that budget, though, there's a mandated services portion of that budget that school districts are required to approve, and we should be getting that sometime, I would say, within the next month, month or so, it has to be approved by mid-April and submitted to the IU, so I'm assuming, Brian, that they're going to be contacting those if they have them already and submitting that.
We already have it, I have it with special, I have to make sure we have the correct services.
So it should be ready for the next board meeting.
In March, yes.
Yep, good. And in terms of anything legislative, I did send to the board, in addition to the summary of the board meeting and the BCIU news link, I did send the board a legislative update from that, from that meeting of January twentieth, so that's all for my report. Thanks, Dr. Herring.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Township Liaison, Mr. Mel?
Yes, the only thing I'll report is the Exeter Township Board of Supervisors did vote last night to approve their amended 2022 budget, which is a real estate tax increase from two-point-one-four-five to two-point-three-nine-five mils. That's really good for my end.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Next is public comments. We have no one listed here, but would anybody like to be heard from the public at this time? No? Okay. Would anyone on the board like to be heard? Okay. There will be an executive session following this meeting to discuss a personnel matter, and hearing no objections, we will adjourn. Thank you.